Good afternoon and welcome everyone. Thank you for attending this meeting of the Education, Children and Families Policy Committee. The meeting today is open to the public and there are no items that contain exempt information. The meeting will be webcast and the recording will also be available for people to view later through the council's website. It is also possible that Sheffield Live TV will record and rebroadcast this meeting. We have received one question from a member of the public. And please can I request that mobile telephones and other such equipment are switched to silent mode so as not to disturb the conduct of the meeting? There is no fire test planned for today. If there is an emergency evacuation, please take instruction from the town hall staff and the assembly point is in Tudor Square. I would like now to ask each member of the committee in turn to introduce themselves and I'll go from this side. Thank you.
Thanks, I'm councillor Tovey Mallinson for Hillsborough. I'm deputy chair. Thanks.
Councillor Talibson, councillor for Wrenbury Ward and member of the committee.
Councillor Rob Alister for Greys Park Ward.
Hi, councillor for Netherduden Shire Ward, Nigat Bishara.
Councillor Mohammed Marouf for Greys Park Ward, group spokesperson for the Lib Dems.
Councillor Amritika, councillor for West Ecklesfield Ward.
Councillor Rebecca Atkinson for Dorantotley Ward.
Thank you, and I have apologies from councillor Malika Hebe. So there are no items contained on today's agenda which excludes the public or press. Item number three, are there any declarations of interest on any items of business on today's agenda? I'll take silence as a no, thank you. Item number four, which is on page 11 of your agenda pack, is minutes of the last meeting. Has everyone had an opportunity to read the minutes? So I'll go through them page by page, page 11, page 12, page 13, page 14, page 15, page 16, page 17 and page 18. Do we all agree that that is a true record of last month's meeting? Thank you, everyone. So item number five is public questions and statements. We have one question which falls within the remit of this committee and if the questioner would like to come forward and take a seat. Yep?
Thank you, everybody. My name is Mark Lalamand and I've been a teacher for 40 years now. I've been at the same school for 20 years and I'm currently teaching two days a week having been the head of department and I'm also now a district caseworker for the National Education Union. My question comes in a particular context, so I want to just outline that context. Those of us who have been working as district caseworkers for the National Education Union and also you'll see that the question is supported by Unison in Sheffield, we've become increasingly aware of the large numbers of schools that are leaving local authority and moving to multi-academy trusts. We have a concern surrounding this over the duplication that this involves in terms of us as union officers being involved in lots of different meetings and multi-academy trusts which are basically just repeating the work of the local authority. We also have an increasing concern over casework at multi-academy trust schools in terms of the referrals that we're getting. We also are concerned about top slicing in terms of education funding with it being quite clear and in the public domain that many multi-academy trusts take a larger top slice of education funding than the local authority does and that is therefore money that is being set aside for administrative purposes and potentially not having a direct impact on the education of our young people. Also, we have concerns about the lack of accountability with multi-academy trusts with there being no requirement for MATS to have parents on their governing bodies. So there is a potential for a lack of transparency with schools that should be community anchors not actually being as directly linked to their communities as they should be. Finally, I don't know whether the committee is aware with the new government that the government has announced the ending of the grant scheme for schools choosing to become academies as from January 1st, 2025. Also, there are currently no plans to renew the TSAF funding which is a funding pot of a large amount of cash, I think over half a million or more, available to trust to develop capacity for taking on underperforming schools. This has all been reported in Schools Week if people want to check the references. So my question is this, can the committee explain why so many local authority schools are leaving local authority control through academyisation with approximately 60% of schools in Sheffield now being academies? Can the local authority present itself more robustly to Sheffield schools as an attractive education provider despite the constraints there might be on council finances? In this context, does the committee feel able to recognise that education is a service that is in the best interests of Sheffield citizens as a service managed by a local authority which has oversight of the education of children and young people in our city rather than the local authority overseeing an increasing fragmentation of the education sector? The question has the support of my fellow NEU district caseworkers and secretaries. It also has the support of Unison, NAHT, National Association of Head Teachers, representative is aware of the question as is the NAS representative in Sheffield and it also has the support of the last National Education Union committee meeting. So there we go, thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Thank you for coming in and asking a question. I understand that we've had some administrative difficulties prior to this with our website giving wrong information, so what I will be doing is providing you with a written response after the meeting. But what I would like to propose is that we do meet regularly with unions and we ask for agenda items which meet with myself and our education team and maybe we should get that on the agenda for that as to have a discussion with regards to what is supporting is your need and what we are doing. I do know that we do do a lot of work with schools in supporting on an individual basis when it comes to working with schools to keep them being maintained schools and try and support them to remain maintained. But as I said, the full information will come out in a written response to you, but I think we should pick this up afterwards, maybe through our regular meetings with unions which we do have and we do discuss academyisation there as well, if that would be all right and put that as an action so that we make sure that that's on the agenda.
Good, thank you.
Thank you very much. So we now, we don't have any items in item number six under members' questions, so we move on to agenda item number seven which is on page 21 of your pack and it is the work programme and I'll hand over to Rachel.
Thank you, Chair. Good afternoon, everyone. So in the agenda pack on page 21, that's where the work programme is laid out. If you leave to page 24, you will see that that's where there's the proposed additions and amendments and you will see that there's quite a lot of movement that has occurred there and hopefully that table which rolls on to other pages lays all that out for you very clearly so you can see what's new, what's removed and what's been, you know, changed. That falls right down onto page 26 actually, this is quite a lot there. At the bottom of page 26, you will see that there's outstanding responses to full council motions, so I just want to highlight there that what's detailed in that table was discussed at the CPL committee on the 30th of September and I can inform you that that was noted by that committee. And then if we move down onto page 29, you will see that that is the intention of the agendas for forthcoming meetings from now and beyond, you know, and that's open for your discussion, you can see. I know that the agendas are quite heavy and that was raised at last meeting, so I am actually going to pass back to Chair now to just discuss the possibility of an extra meeting. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Rachel. In light of councillor Marouf's proposals at our last meeting, looking at the length of some of our agendas each month and the work that is on the work programme, it is proposed that we have an extra meeting in January 2025 so that we can streamline some of our agendas and reduce the items. So we're not planning on, we're not suggesting that we add anything additional to the work programme, what we're suggesting is we look at the work programme and spread the agenda items across with an extra meeting in January so that it gives us time to debate and ask questions in meetings. I'd like to put that to the floor to ask if everyone is in support of that and if not, if you can just raise your hand if you've got any dissent or are we all happy to have an additional meeting in January? Yep, thank you, Rachel, I think that's agreed. Thank you. Any other questions or comments on the work programme? On that note, does anybody want to add anything to the work programme although it is quite hefty as it is? No? Okay, thank you very much. We now move on to agenda item number eight which is DCS update report and I'm just mindful that I didn't offer the opportunity for officers to introduce themselves to the meeting, so if you do speak, if you can just introduce yourself first hand. Thank you very much.
So this paper is from me, Meredith Teasdale, Strategic Director for Children's Services. It's an update that I give at each committee meeting which sets out the work that I particularly have been involved in but also that the team have been involved in which is hopefully giving some flavour of the work that takes place. I set it out in the format of the statutory guidance for directors of children's services where the focus is leadership and partnership, safeguarding, fair access for all children and educational excellence. So really it's a question of whether there is any information you would like to understand or any additional information that you would like. I suppose an up-to-date piece of work that's not in here is that we did have an Ofsted focused visit last week which was focusing on placement decision-making for older children. That report will be, or we hope that the letter will be published at the end of November when we will be able to share it with you and it comes in quite timely because we're also looking to share with you the SEF for Children and Families Services which focuses on our children who are in statutory process. But it felt like a useful, a useful visit which confirmed that we know ourselves well and so again the SEF will give you a clear picture of where we are and the trajectory that we need to go on.
Thank you, Meredith. Just for new members, what is a SEF?
Self-evaluation. Well, it could be a form or a framework and that's why I kind of hesitated with the S.
It's all about self-evaluation but we'll be getting that end of November. Thank you, Meredith. Any questions for Meredith on her report this month? No? Thank you, Meredith. No? Okay, thank you very much. So we now move on to agenda item number nine which is the Sheffield Children's Safeguarding Partnership Annual Report and I believe Amanda is coming to present that. Thank you.
So I'm Amanda Barton-Brown, Assistant Director, Quality Assurance and Involvement Service and I'm going to hand over to Ria because I'm not going to take the credit for the annual report because a lot of that is Ria and her team and her services work.
Hi, my name's Ria Walsh, I'm the Service Manager for the Safeguarding Partnership. So as outlined in Working Together, Safeguarding Partners must jointly report on their activity that they've undertaken in the last 12 months, so the annual report needs to be transparent and easily accessible to families and professionals. And the focus of the annual report is on the partnership's priorities, our learning, the impact and any evidence and any improvements that we've made. So in terms of this year, we've tried to really reduce the complexity of language used, we've tried to introduce a lot more pictures and infographics so it's much more accessible to children and young people. We've also produced a one-page summary this year which highlights the key points over the annual report because we recognise it's quite a lengthy document and next year we're hoping to actually set up a panel of children and young people to actually help us to produce the report. And we've also tried to strengthen capturing the impact of the work of the partnership as well. Any questions?
Thank you, Ria. Have we got any questions for Ria on this item? No? Thank you very much. Just on that then, it's recommended that Education, Children and Families Policy Committee note the contents of the annual report and be aware of the work of the Sheffield Children's Safeguarding Partnership. Are we all all right to note that? Thank you very much. Resolved. Thank you. Now we move on to item number 10 which is on page 167 of your agenda pack and this is the short breaks re-tendering paper and that's not Amy but that's Jo and Becky will be presenting today. Thank you.
Hi, Jo Horrabin, Director of Integrated Commissioning. I'm standing in for Amy Budgeri, member of my team who's unwell and not able to attend today.
And I'm Becky Toll, Assistant Director from Children's Services and part of my role is to manage the children with disability service.
So the paper that you have in front of you is our commissioning strategy, setting out our proposed approach to securing appropriate range of provision for short break activities for children and young people. This is part of our statutory offer. It is the council's duty under the Breaks for Carers of Disabled Children regs 2011 and we are required to provide daytime care, overnight care, education and leisure activities outside of the home and services to assist carers in evenings, weekends and holidays. We currently have a framework, we are in an extension period of that framework. We came here to committee in August 2023 to request an extension to that framework so that we could do a really robust and involved stakeholder engagement exercise so that we really understood what children and young people and their families and carers wanted and needed from our short breaks offer. We have undertaken that and particularly through the summer of this year, we have done extensive consultation with children and families and we are now coming back to recommend that we proceed with a new framework for the provision of short breaks. These are specialist short breaks for disabled children who are supported by our SNIPS service, that's the Special Needs and Inclusion Play Service, and these short breaks are really an essential part of a package of support to meet a child's needs. These are not sort of public access short breaks and activities. What's not included in this are the short breaks grants and direct payments which also make up part of that package of support for some children and young people. Daytime short breaks often serve as a preventative measure, supporting families to cope and to stay together and to manage competing demands of family life in a way that is sustainable for them in the long term and families receive either a standard or an enhanced package of support. The proposal that we have in front of you is that we will add some additional lots to our framework and we will expand our specification to encourage a broader range of providers and a broader range of provision and opportunities to continue to develop that provision over the course of the four-year plus-one framework. The new lots that we want to add to this are specifically outward bounds short breaks. These are currently provided in-house and by an external provider called Whitehall and these are quite targeted. This is quite an intensive, more expensive form of support and it is a targeted opportunity. We also want to include a lot for activity-based residential short breaks. We currently provide residential short breaks through our existing in-house residential provision, but we are keen to look at how we could reduce pressure on that specialist residential provision by working with the market and developing the market for more diverse options for that kind of provision overnight. So we really want to develop a range of market options in addition to in-house options so as to enhance efficiency. We are proposing to expand the capacity of the framework, so we are looking to increase the framework by 25 places per year which is what we believe that increase in demand for places will be. So children tend to start with the services and stay in their service, in that service, accessing it for their teenage years through to adulthood. However, you know, we are seeing more and more children coming on board, so we need to expand by 25 places per year over the next four years. And we are also proposing a tweak to the specification to test the market and seek providers who are able and interested in working with children over the age of 18 as well because we are really conscious that, you know, some continuity of provision is really important for a child and their family just at that crucial point in their transition to adulthood. So we've been working closely with colleagues in adults commissioning to make sure that we are working with some of the providers on their day opportunities, day activities framework so that we've got some continuity and there's quite a lot of interest, I think, across that. So that's, I think, a really positive step. So I'm going to pause there and I'm very happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Have we got any questions on this one? I've got councillor Nigat, councillor Marouf and councillor Mallinson. Councillor Nigat.
Yeah, first of all, thank you. I was here when you actually shared the report last time, really pleased with all the hard work you're doing. Just a question, just from my understanding, the daytime short break, I find it very welcoming. Just wanted to understand, you know, you mentioned you have a current in-house residential but you're trying to look at expanding outside which is a good step. Do you feel there's more cost within in-house or have you explored the market outside? And do you feel, because sometimes, working with some parents myself, sometimes, you know, the packages I do find you can negotiate and it can be cheaper but you're the experts on that field. So that's one and when you say 25 spaces, is that once the child, the individual is referred or got that package, so is that 25 spaces per year? If I'm making this sense. So it's for that one child throughout the year, they get to do that or you're just saying 25 spaces per year depending on who's needing that?
So first of all, the working with external providers, one of the reasons we want to include this in our specification as a, as part of the options for providers to apply for, to tender for is because we want to test the market and to, you know, we think that there's an interest there but it probably needs some development and work with us to really establish that more concretely. So by including it in the tender documents, we can encourage the market to apply and we can start really testing and developing that offer in a bit more detail. So in terms of the cost, you know, that will remain to be worked on with providers and we'll see what kind of responses we get from the market. But we are, we have a fixed amount of budget for this over the course of the four years, so we will be working closely with providers on making sure that we can manage this within the financial envelope whilst meeting our statutory duties to provide the support. The second question that you raised about the 25 places, so some children each year will reach adulthood and move on to other activities or other opportunities and so they will move off that short breaks offer and new children will start. We actually think that we will need more places for those children starting provision than will be ceasing provision because of the increasing demand with the increase in the number of education, health and care plans and the pressure in the system with more children with more complex needs. So the 25 additional places per year will in effect add capacity to the system so that by the end of the four-year period we'll have 100 more places that will support children and young people as they move through. Does that, does that make sense? Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Mallinson.
Thanks for the report. I'm really pleased to hear about the service expanding, it sounds, you know, it sounds very interesting. I'm just, a similar question really about funding. Obviously the funding requirements are growing. Just want to query, I'm secure that is, which budget line does it come from within the council and that sort of thing? Thanks.
So yes, we have made provision for this within our budget and the pressures and the inflationary pressures have been estimated in this costing for the framework. So yes, this is, I don't know Becky, if you want to say anything about where the budget comes from, but this is part of meeting our duty to meet need.
Yeah, it's from the budget that we hold within children's and it has all been agreed and it's, and we absolutely see that short breaks in all its forms is absolutely essential for this cohort.
I don't disagree with that. It's obviously, you know, the sort of question in one's mind might be where's the money coming from if it's being diverted? I'm not saying it shouldn't be diverted, it's something, a really important thing, but that's a subsidiary question is, yeah, maybe I'd need to look at the accounts, I guess, but where would that money be coming from? Thanks.
So the money's not being diverted, so it's coming from general funds and it is a decision that we were taking about how we use our money. There is a work that we're also doing about how we're looking for the ICB to also support in this space and there'll be further conversations around that, I'm sure, when we go through the budget process about how we're making sure that we're using the money in the system in the best way possible as well.
Thank you.
Councillor Marouf.
Thank you, Chair. I mean firstly, it's very commendable that we're actually...
I mean, firstly, it's very commendable that we're actually increasing the service in a very sensitive area here as well. So I'd begin by saying that, but there's a couple of questions I do have. One is page 177, and I think you refer to that, if I if I read it. Outward bounds and activity-based residential short breaks have no formal commissioning framework for purchasing services and quality assuring them. And then you, the next paragraph reads, current providers are lethargic with commissioning arrangements at present. The question that arises out of that is, are there not enough service providers out there and can we be held to monopoly conditions, more or less, where we're ending up paying far more than we probably would have done otherwise as compared to having it in-house? Because this has been something that's happening across the board, where even in, dare I use an example of children's homes, where costs have consistently started to increase because the number of providers had started to reduce. Because obviously, some of them find it difficult to come through our commissioning arrangements that we have. And I can say from the private sector point of view that sometimes people do worry about going through the procurement regulations, which can be quite cumbersome and tiresome for a lot of people to go through. So that's question number one, that we're not being held to any ransom there in terms of the prices that we're being quoted. The second one is is more on a line with the cost per child, which is 2,962, which is fine, but how does that compare with other authorities that are in a similar position to us? Are we better than them? Are we worse than them? Or are we about average? Because that gives us an indication of how where how what level we're providing at, if you see what I'm trying to get at there. Thank you, Chair.
So first of all, the the paragraphs that you're referring to, councillor Marouf, are are relate to our current contract arrangements. So this is under alternative option number one, which which would be to have tried to extend our existing framework. And the reason that we're not recommending that is because the current framework, as it's set up, isn't flexible enough and doesn't meet the demand that we that we have and doesn't allow us to flex the provision to really support inclusion and choice. So and there is no, under the current framework, there is no provision for outward bounds and activity-based residential. So that means that we don't have a mechanism for quality assurance of those either. So the reason that we are proposing going out for a new framework with new specification and including specification for outward bounds and activity-based residential is so that we address that that gap in the current provision. And the lethargy described is is a lack of interest in our current providers on the current framework to expand into some of the more diverse range of 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 offer that we are looking for. And that, again, is why we want to go back out to the market to seek providers who are energized by by that opportunity to to deliver something more more creative and innovative. So both of those will be over, both of those issues will be over overcome by going out to the market. We've done quite a bit of work with the market, so we're quite confident that that's the that's the case. And then the the unit cost, as you as you have requested, how do we compare with other local authorities? That's something that I can take away and come back and and give you a bit more information on, but I don't think we are out of kilter in terms of what we spend. In if anything, we have tended to be on the lower side rather than the higher side, I think, for short break provision. But I will double check that and I can provide you with some core city benchmarking.
Is that okay? Thank you very much. Any more questions or comments? Councillor Bannister.
Yes, glad to hear you're looking at doing potentially the over 18s, because 18s, it's a rather abstract societal number, especially in the neurodiverse. My question is, will 25 additional places be enough? If you don't get the drop off the other end, you're expecting if you can support them further into what we call adulthood?
Yeah, so and there's been lots and lots of discussions with our adult colleagues so that, because we absolutely recognize that that 18 for for a lot of children is not not the right time to move. Lots of things change when you're 18 anyway. So we're working with our adult colleagues and in terms of us having an additional 25 places, so that they can, they, that will continue with adults as well. So we're working very closely with them so that there isn't that cliff edge, if you like, and that everything changes. We recognize that, you know, for a lot of children, when they're they've been in the short breaks for a long time and they've, you know, some have been going for many years to the same provider and it's an absolute part of their consistency to day. So, yeah, we're looking at all of that.
So it'll sort of be taken on by adult services, but kind of guided by you, almost like we can transition into the officially at the different department, but kind of by this one kind of thing. Yeah.
Yes, we're working very closely with them.
Councillor Bashra.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that, you know, from the community, there has been from parents that after, you know, 18, the difficulties, not seeing much support there, so welcoming that. Just wanted to throw it out to yourselves, because being involved with some residenials where we take young people out to the nature. So there's quite a few in our Sheffield, so it's worth tapping into them as well. They're already doing stuff, but obviously, because like Rob mentioned, you're going to be leading and making sure that they are, you know, the criteria, they're following everything, but it's work tapping into them because they are doing quite good stuff with taking young people on residential, again, for the same reasons. And it's just going out for works and in the nature. So I found them very beneficial and good feedback as well.
Anything like that, if you want to just let me know, give me the information and that we can certainly look into anything like that.
Thank you, councillor Bashra. Councillor Seaman.
Thank you very much. My question is, total number of 344, what was the number of, you know, the background of diverse communities or diversity of those childrens? Any numbers or percentage?
I haven't got that in front of me. I can certainly get that information because we do have that information.
Mary De.
So and I think that the other point would be that we are making sure that there is cultural understanding of the short break services that we're providing as well and making sure that it is also that that there are a range of provisions as well within the framework. Yep.
Yes, absolutely. And we're doing a lot of work with services like SNPs and with children disabilities around diversity as well, so that we, and with external providers, so any children that are placed in residential homes outside of of our in-house provision. All that is is certainly high on the agenda and we're looking at that along with partners.
Any more questions or comments on this item? No. Oh, Jo.
Yeah, just just so that everybody's aware, I met with members of the Adult Health and Social Care Committee earlier for a briefing, so I have described this to them as well because of the transitions to adulthood aspect. And they've asked that it be noted at the Adult Health and Social Care Committee, but the decision clearly sits sits here to with the proposal.
Thank you, Jo. Councillor Marouf.
Thank you. Yeah, just on the equality side of things, there's an equality impact assessment, but it doesn't really give much detail on, well, it talks about disability, but doesn't give any detail on other protected characteristics. So it's for future reference, it'd be really useful to have that information. And maybe if you could reissue this assessment, that'd be really handy with that information on it. Thank you.
Sorry, just on that as well, looking at the impacted characteristics, care experience and people aren't on here, which is something that we're supposed to be looking at as part of our impact assessments when making decisions. So if we can review that impact assessment, that'd be great. Thank you very much. Any more comments on this one? No? Okay, thank you. So the recommendations are that this committee approve the recommissioning of a four-year plus a potential extension year of the short breaks framework agreement through competitive tender process with the open market, that we approve the inclusion of outward bounds as a static level over four years and activity-based residential short breaks on the new framework, and that we approve the overall four-year budget of 5.75 million pounds for lots one and two on the new framework. Lot three, activity-based residential short breaks budget to be identified and agreed at a further date. Do we have agreement? There's no dissent and that recommendation has been carried. Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Can I just ask, when people do come up to speak, that you get your name card and pop it on front, please? They are there, apparently, which I wasn't aware of, but a bit late now, but thank you very much. So anyone else to come forward? That brings us on to agenda item number 11, which is our review of staying policy. But due to the publication of an inaccurate article in the media yesterday and to prevent any further misinformation creating anxiety amongst our fostering community, I'm proposing that we defer this item until our December meeting. This will allow time for officers and members to engage further with members of the public and to ensure that the correct information is communicated. I'm proposing that we invite members of the public who have written to us with regards to this policy, that we invite them to an all-member briefing with officers and all members, so that we can address the concerns and get full brief, another full briefing from officers. It will then give us the opportunity to make an informed decision in December. The meeting is in four weeks' time. I just feel that we should be hearing what people are saying before we make a decision. I need to take a vote on this and comments from any members of the committee. Does anyone ever need dissent or any comments that they'd like to make on this item? Councillor Marouf.
Thank you, Chair. I now understand from the conversation we had just before the meeting started, the reason for deferring this. It's something that we on this side are very concerned about it being deferred because it was, if I believe correctly, I might misread this completely, so somebody will correct, yeah, will correct me. I think we pushed it from September to November, didn't we? And now it's ended up in December. So that is rather concerning and I think there's been a lot of issues around this report. So we wouldn't have, we wouldn't have liked it to be deferred today.
Thank you, councillor Marouf. I wouldn't have liked it to have been to have been deferred either. I would have liked to have been able to have it presented and discussed today. But in light of the media attention it got yesterday and the information that does need challenging and rectifying, and I think we do need to be able to offer people the platform that have written to us, to be able to speak to us directly. That is the whole point of our new democratic process. And in order for us, I feel, to make an informed decision, we do need to really be clear on what the decisions are that we're making. So I I agree with you, councillor Marouf, on that one, but we are unfortunately, I don't feel comfortable making a decision and I don't know about other members when there's misinformation around councillor Bashra.
Yeah, I feel the same as well. I can understand that sometimes, I think, looking at, you know, where we stand and making those decisions, I totally agree with you, not rushing any decision because these are important decisions we make here and the impact it has on, obviously, those communities. So I think just basically because of that information, it's just getting clarification, listening and understanding and then questioning before we actually make a proper decision and obviously have that discussion ourselves. I totally agree with you on that.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councillor Mollison.
Yeah, just to, it's unfortunate, I think, but it's, I I think it's important that we, if there's perception or if in fact the consultation with stakeholders hasn't been adequate, and certainly there's a perception of that in the amongst the stakeholders, it's important that we don't move forward until we're satisfied that that we're doing the right thing.
Thank you. So at this point, I will just need to take a vote from all members, whether you're in agreement that we can defer this until December. Are we all in agreement?
We'd like abstention from that.
Okay, thank you. So we've got, can you just raise your hands then, please? So we've got five in agreement and three abstentions. Thank you. That's been carried. Thank you. Okay, thank you very much. So we now move on to agenda item number 12, which is on page 215 of your pack, and this is the Education, Children and Families Performance Framework. And it's James who's coming to present today.
Good afternoon. I'm James Ford, head of performance and insight for the council. I'm here today to bring the proposal to establish a regular performance reporting framework for the Education, Children and Families Committee. The intention is to allow members to receive consistent performance information, strengthen the committee's over regular oversight of derivative performance and fulfill its remit to regularly monitor performance of services and delivery against the council plan. So as a bit of background, as you know, we agreed our new council plan, its outcomes and priorities earlier this year. And then from the back of that, we agreed our new performance and outcomes framework. The performance framework, the key kind of recommendation here was to establish, for each committee, sorry, to establish regular reporting. And the outcomes framework gave measures related to each of the outcomes in the council plan. Those measures were necessarily very high level and the intention was always to develop the next tiers down at committee, directorate and service level. I think you'll see today colleagues that presented the safeguarding report, we'll see some of those kind of lower level metrics appear there in that golden thread. So to that end, bringing forward three recommendations, going through them in turn, by far the most substantial is recommendation one. That pertains to appendix one of this document, which is a list of performance measures we will use going forward. We've developed these measures on the back of those that are already in the outcomes framework that we developed with the street director of children's services and their leadership team. Within that appendix document, we've also got and documented our rationale for why we chose those measures and how they link to the spirit and intent of each priority under outcome one, a place where all children belong and all young people can build a successful future. Along with the measures, we've established some targets. So again, we've worked with children's services and measure owners and the strategic director to establish those targets based on our historic performance, where we want to be based on realistic ambition. And the intention is as well that we'll provide comparator information, how well we how well we're performing against other councils, to triangulate that and come up with a reasonable target for success. Each of the measures is organized against each one of the priorities within outcome one. I won't go through them line by line, but the form two outlines how we've expanded the set of metrics for priority one. At outcome level for priority one, ensuring young people can feel they belong and thrive, we have key metrics like children registered at family hubs, develop milestones at a two-year review, we've expanded into measures such as school readiness at age five, which we know getting that right has a direct impact on school attendance and attainment. And those metrics, again, feature further in the framework. We've expanded into things, which is two-year-olds benefiting from free-funded education, three-and-four-years benefiting free free-funded education, again, which you know has an impact on on other measures in the framework. Again, using the example of, essentially, key stage four pupils achieving plus four in maths and English, very high level outcome level, but we've got other measures here that kind of show that wider educational journey, starting with securing your first preference school place, your attainment at key stage two and the quality of our schools leading right the way through to A level. So that's just an example of how that is rounded out to show the journey of a child. I won't go through the other priorities, but the theme follows the same for you. Going to recommendation two, once we've got these metrics in place, is to bring quarterly reporting back to this committee, using the measures that we've established in recommendation one and the targets, so we can produce a report that shows where we're achieving or exceeding, celebrating success on those targets, where we're at risk of not meeting it as an amber rating, or where that is essentially a red ragged performance measure, where we need to take some action and we're not, we're not meeting the target. The intention would be to bring a narrative. The intention would be to bring a narrative to explain why the situation is as it is, the actions that have been taken to address it, and the timescales and quantum of change that we would expect to see. That then leads me on to recommendation three, and that's about review. So in establishing this framework, we'll need to review it on a regular basis. Minimum, that's annually, but my recommendation would be here that particularly as it's a fledgling framework, we want potentially to bring back each quarters and recommendations from dialogue with members and officers around new metrics, changes to targets, and also recognising the external position here. So we've got measures in here that are related to government schemes, which are built successful families, family hubs may be well subject to change and will have to adapt accordingly. I think the spirit and intent will remain the same, but the measures and targets may shift. There's also the office of local government. It's not yet touched children's services, but their intention is to bring those comparative metrics here, and our performance framework mandates that any offload measure will be as part of our committee, as part of our committee reporting as well. So the recommendation would be that, thirdly, we bring back those who review each quarter in addition to the annual review. So presenting that in the round, those three recommendations should give us the required ingredients for reporting to the board, so to committee on an ongoing quarterly basis, and I'll stop there and open up to questions.
Thank you for that. I forgot, I've just got, I think you've answered my question, but I have a comment. councillor Sayen, anyone else wants to comment on this one?
Thank you very much for the presentation. My question is that the performance between schools and academies or trust, how do you measure and what the impacts, you know, between local authority schools and academies?
Okay, that's a really good question. I think that probably brings us to that third point of our review, where we will be able to bring back and suggest that we split maybe some of the attainment, the attainment measures where possible by that split. So we're not doing it now, but that's certainly something we could bring into it. Again, I think it's probably quite a bit of scope. These measures are at sort of the base level, there's various kind of perspectives I think we'll want to look at going forward into bringing that review, particularly around demographics, ethnicity, free school meals play a big part, particularly in measures like attendance and suspensions. So that's something we'd, I think, council would look to develop in the future, if I make a note of it.
I love it when people ask all the right questions. It means everybody understands why we're here. Meredith, did you want to come in on that?
Do you want to go first or I'm?
No, you can go first, that's fine.
So I think as committee members, we need to understand that where our children are educated and how they attain in those schools is really important, and that's actually the governance structure of how they're educated is not the key factor, it's the fact that whether they are retaining, whether they are included in schools. And we have fantastic schools in the cities, we also have schools that we need to work alongside and walk alongside, and the role of Learn Sheffield within that is really important and absolutely central to the work that we need to do. I personally would feel very uncomfortable if we were splitting data based on academies and local authority maintained schools. I think there are times when that is right, but actually we've been needing, I would advise you as committee, that you need to be looking at the totality to ensure that everything is moving up. We know that we have real issues around children not in education, employment and training. The number of children who are reaching level two at the end of their academic career is, it should be something that we're really focusing on, this will allow us to do that, that is across the board. That starts off with perhaps the impact of COVID in primary school takes its way through to secondary school. Those children who would have had their GCSE results in September would have been transitioning between primary and secondary school at that point of COVID. So I think our emphasis needs to be on how we're supporting to get the best for our children rather than personally, rather than the governance structures of how schools are run.
councillor Bashra.
Yeah, thank you, Meredith. I think that's a good point you made because again, listening to yourself is looking at the local demographics, because government will have obviously a set of steps to thinking about, making sure, I'm pleased throughout the meetings when officers and your team has come, is making sure that we're looking at the local needs, but just using that as a guide, but making sure that we are being inclusive, like with your frame, the belonging framework, which I'm really passionate about, I love that. You mentioned about the, this is just from my own understanding and I might have missed it, so whether, you know, you mentioned the quarterly, the reporting and the yearly, wasn't that happening before? Because everything, because with this, what you were saying, I fully support it, because by doing this, if there's any gaps somewhere, we can pick it up sooner and then make sure we intervene and look out where to get budgets and, or, you know, cover financially. Because I find that, my understanding was that we're probably already doing that, but if we weren't doing, I'm not saying, it was just me understanding it that we were already doing that kind of stuff.
No, no, absolutely, and this is establishing against a new council plan. So it's establishing against the priorities that we've got in the plan. So reporting was taking place before this brings it all together into one aligned piece. And I think if you read the narrative, and Meredith said that there's, I've only scratched the surface on the measures, but they're intended to form the journey of a child, child through to being a young person. And we hope we've got them all right, but that regular review will be, we can add them to it. So it's very much a reset in scope of the council plan and putting them in the containers of the different priorities so we can see the link, if that makes sense.
Thank you. councillor Mallinson.
Thank you. I think this is an excellent idea to get this data and to help the committee. But in terms of the different types of school governance, and I do acknowledge what Meredith has just said, but the, will all this data be available from the academies as easily as it is from maintained schools?
Yeah, so everything we've chosen, the framework is based on data that's available to us now. There's a presentation, I think, in the appendix, I gave a bit of a view of how that might look and some of the prototypes that we've done to support reporting, but very much so, yeah, we've chosen data that is available to us and shared with us and nationally comparable as well.
Thanks, and I do absolutely concur with colleagues about the importance of having key parts of the data split along relevant protected characteristics and so on, and they'll be very useful. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I just thank you, James? This has been a mammoth task. I understand there is so, I mean, across the whole authority and every directorate, there is a lot of data, but I think particularly when you're working in children's of people, there's a lot of really complicated data. And I think what I don't want to get caught up on is the academies versus maintained schools issue on this either, because at key stage four, the majority of our schools are academies, and I think a lot of it is going to be about relationships, which Learn Sheffield will help us form, but also with our offices and us as members as well. I think it's just going to have to be really important that, as Meredith has said, some schools are doing really well, others we will need to walk alongside and support to make sure that we achieve the best outcomes for our children and young residents in Sheffield. I just think additional to that, this is going to be great. You answered the question at the beginning about this kind of being fluid, we are just scratching the surface when it comes to priorities, and these are probably the most prominent ones that we need to deal with now, but as we start to look at the journey of the child, I'm sure that there will be. And I'm glad to know that we can be responsive. So although we'll have like a three-month review of the items on the priorities, what is the, what will the mechanism be for urgent items? So, you know, in an area if something urgent crops up, how do we call it in to make sure that that then becomes a priority? Do we have to wait, if we've just met, do we have to wait another three months or can we, is there a mechanism for us to change our priorities in response? I don't want to be firefighting, but sometimes, yeah, thank you, Meredith.
So I think part of the mechanism of having spokespeople and the committee structure means that on that regular basis, we can ensure that where something feels like it is not within the agreed parameters, that we can raise that, and we can also use the knowledge briefings between times to make sure that we can assure you of the work that we're doing, to put it right, in between committee structure. So I think that opportunity for that oversight by yourselves, both, I know we're slightly unusual by having a trio, but the trio, and then the way that we are coming together as a committee, and that can then inform committee at knowledge briefing, so that can inform some of the conversations that we have. I mean, and again, there's some fantastic data that we have here, so you shouldn't underestimate the fantastic work that goes on across the city, but for example, the number of children in care that we have within Sheffield is far lower than if you benchmark it even against our core cities. Now that is about social workers and people working in children's social care, managing a level of risk with partners, with families, but also means that we know that where a child comes into care, their outcomes reduce, and it creates a huge amount of issues, and also then also relates to cost. We're better off spending our money in early help and in prevention than in high-cost specialist services. And over the coming weeks, when you also look at the budget relating to this, you will see that in comparison to most local authorities in the country, we are managing a budget around our placements, rather than where, you know, you only need to look at other core cities, and the amount of overspend that they have in the placement area also links to the hard work that takes place, which links back to the performance data. And when you're looking at the number of children in child in need, child protection, children in care, and that also shows that picture, which over the coming weeks and months, we'll be sharing with you and you'll be understanding that journey that we are on.
Thank you, Meredith. councillor Murrough, then councillor Atkinson and councillor Bashra.
Thank you for that, Chair, and thank you for the report as well. I think it's very comprehensive and informative, and I was just going to agree with the Chair around the fact that there are certain items that we will probably want to bring forward a lot quicker, and I think Meredith has also sort of articulated that as well. The reason I was going to raise it was because on, it's around the knife crime issue, which has been prevalent for quite some time, and we don't hear so much about it now, but looking at the figures that we have there, they are quite alarming. So it'd be interesting to see, 467 such admissions from just going into hospital after knife crime, it's quite significant, even one is quite significant, never mind 467. But it would be interesting to see how the measures that we've been putting in place and how we're going to be looking at this in, well, it says 2024 here, but at some stage. Those sort of things are terribly important, I think, for children, young people.
I think that's a really important point to raise councillor Murrough, and it is absolutely one of our priorities, and I think we need an officer response on that, so I would like to respond on that.
Sally's going to come forward.
Sally, do you want to come forward and just let us know what's happening on that? Thank you. Because it is one of our priorities and there is a lot of work going on, it's just not being able to get up the work programme, I don't think.
It's just that you've not heard much about it recently.
Yeah.
Sorry, I'm echoing. So Sally, I think it was, I'm going to help you echo now even more than you are at the moment, around knife crime and the work that's taking place, both around contextual safeguarding and also the exploitation work that's taking place within the council as well, and how that's linking through, because the figures are relatively high as, yeah, well, we've got the data in there, we haven't got the figures yet.
Tomorrow we've got consultation, sorry, Thursday we've got consultation with our partners about what we're doing in relation to our community safeguarding and about what that narrative is, so working with VIU. And, so I'm just going to have to switch it off, I think it's reacting with the microphones. And so what we're doing with the VIU about the knife crime strategy, but one thing that's really key in terms of how we're working with our partners is around that narrative and what the incidence of knife crime and serious youth violence is, and being able to make sure that that work is positive with voluntary sector, for example, because what we see in media often creates a very inflated picture of what serious youth violence and knife crime looks like in city for our young people. We don't want any, and any serious and any instance of knife crime is too many, but just making sure that we're clear on what the incidence actually is. And then moving forward, it's how we can show a really joined-up approach with partners across the city about not only what we're doing, working with young people in city, what the interventions are and what the actual impact is, and really key to it is what quality assurance we've got as well in there in terms of who's providing services, because there's lots of private providers out there as well.
No, thank you, Chair, and thank you for your response. I think this leads me to what we were suggesting earlier, is it something that we can bring to a committee as a matter of urgency? Because I think, not straight away, obviously, when I say urgency, I mean prioritise it once you've got the information in place, because I think we've heard so much negativity about knife crime, that it'd be important to contextualise it against what the real figures are from where we were and where we are now. We'd like to be zero, but clearly we're not going to get there immediately.
I believe we've got knowledge briefing in a couple of weeks, and then the community safety strategy will be coming to December committee, so over the next few weeks, there's a lot of information that's due to be coming to yourselves.
Thank you.
Thank you. Somebody else has a answer? Councillor Bashra? Oh, councillor Atkinson first, sorry. I have got it written down, I don't know if I can see it, sorry.
It was just a question, really. I mean, all this information's actually quite powerful. What I wondered was, for example, are you able to track, so which pupils, for example, what percentage of two-year-old children benefiting from free-funded early education end up in which schools? You know, because that's quite powerful for standardising, you know, between schools, and it's almost like a good sort of performance improvement tracker, you know, compared, if you look at that compared to percentage of key stage four pupils attending, four-plus in English and maths. And you can also use that to standardise between cohorts as well, you know, so for example, it was very difficult over the COVID years, and, you know, so you can actually see improvements over time using those, you know, that, I just think that's quite, if we are able to do that, I just think that's quite powerful information to have.
Okay, so I think what we're going to do is the connectivity of the framework there. We could choose many different measures, and I think at the moment we've presented them as they are individually, but I think that's what we want to do through the continuous review and development, because can we make them intersectional? So for example, we know there's been some strong evidence around children that perform well at school readiness stage, or sorry, don't perform well, and the correlation with their future school attendance, but the example you put forward there is valid as well. So I think that's what we need to do as a committee, as we mature, we can look at the intersectionality between that and almost create new measures and measurements as we go forward.
I think this is really exciting and a really good opportunity for us to really be able to drive things forward for young residents. So I've now got councillor Bashra and then councillor Mallinson.
Yeah, definitely, I agree with you, Dawn. James, this is fantastic in terms of, you know, like looking at some of the key stuff, like councillor Murrough mentioned, that is talked about and concerns around this within the communities and families. So definitely, I would be interested in knowing a bit more about that and how things are going within the schools. Alongside to that, you're probably already seeing, you know, the homeschooling, and also that's kind of like, from what I'm seeing, but obviously you have the better data around that, it's becoming a little bit high, homeschooling due to including the knife issues and various of the bullying and stuff within the schools, and also school spaces being offered further away where families have a huge impact, and due to that, that's another reason why I'm hearing that they're not actually able to send their kids to schools. But I think this would, what you're doing, I think this will, you know, like capture where the gaps are, where we can actually support those families or individuals why they're not engaging within the school system and homeschooling. Engaging within the school system and homeschooling. I'm just finding, I don't know, is that something also you're going to be looking into through these measures? Do you find it's going to help?
Yes, I think we touched on two things there. It's that these measures intended to start to pull a thread. So I think you talked about distance from school and placements then. We've got that in the first school placement preference, but they're there to intend to start a conversation so we can bring more detailed data in. You point around, I think, elective home education. I think that's potentially candidate member measure we could add if everyone was in agreement and probably won't go put forward for review. I think the kind of trick is managing the breadth and depth at this level because we also want services like education skills and children. We'll have a lower level, I think we saw it saying in the safeguarding piece, there's a lower level of data below that, so it's choosing what comes up and down. But certainly that was, that's certainly a potential candidate measure around elective home education.
Can I invite Pat to just feedback on the education side of things? Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to draw your attention to the outcomes at key stage four measure, which you might be asking, you know, what levers do we have as a council in kind of doing that? We don't teach children, we don't, you know, we're not fortunate enough to teach those children in schools. The outcomes at key stage four, the biggest, one of the biggest influences, biggest negative influences on that is attendance and suspensions. So if we get our work right around the attendance, suspensions, around our belonging framework, we get students placed in the right place. And by definition, the biggest negative starts to rise within that point. So we are aware that. We won't have the direct levers in the schools as far as teaching maths and English and things like that. But this is a big impact on this and one of the biggest impacts, as we mentioned before, is attending the school. It's quite obvious when you think about it, if you don't go to school, you're not going to get the outcomes.
Thank you, Pat, for that. Counselor Mallinson.
Yeah, just coming back to how the data is presented. Obviously, presumably there'll be a report and it'll be like a PDF or whatever, that's fine. But it would be useful, and I don't know if it's possible, but it'd be useful to have the data in a searchable spreadsheet or database so that we can. Do our own analysis of it as well, if you see what I mean, and then ask some more informed questions if necessary.
No, that's a great question. It leans into future development. So the mock-up that you see in the appendices is actually a real report that we're prototyping with Meredith's leadership team. Our intention going forward is that we will make that available to members as well. We've got some technical things to jump through, but that's our intention. So at this level, you would be able to, and I think you can see in that. In that particular example, you can kind of slice and dice it just by different comparators. But as we mature and we have more data, I think we'd introduce content like geography and demographics and things like that. So it's a journey, but that's definitely our strategic intention. And maybe leans into your question, how do we do things between meetings? And when there's more awareness and availability of that data, we can ask questions in between and bring forward items at different forums.
That's great, thank you. Because I mean, I like a graph, but I also like to have some narrative and a bit more of an opportunity to be able to understand it in a bit more in depth. I like it, I like it, what do we call it? An infographic, love an infographic with a little bit of detail. Thank you.
I think the hope is that it will fulfill everybody's wants, whether it be that sort of information sharing or if you're wanting to try and. If you're wanting to cut and splice data and ask questions in that way, it will be able to provide everybody's preferred learning style or understanding style within that. But that might be, I mean, it won't be the first, it'll probably be in the next eighteen months, two years, it will get to that fruition. But it is a really exciting journey using Power BI.
Thank you. This is great and a fantastic opportunity for members to actually be actively involved in that design as well. So that's a really, really good thing. So any more questions or comments on this item? Okay, so there are recommendations on this item that this committee agree. The Education Children and Families Framework, Performance Framework Measure and Targets are set out in Appendix One. Agree to receive quarterly reports that provide an overview of performance against the measures describing performance challenges. Interventions taken and the results of changes made. And agree to the review, to review the measures and targets at least annually in the context of progress. New areas of focus and impact of external changes. Are we all happy to go with those recommendations? Yep, that recommendation is carried. Thank you. Thank you, James. We look forward to seeing you regularly.
Can I just say something as well? Can I just thank James because he honestly, I think, is spending more time focusing on children's than any other committee, but let's not tell them that.
So don't tell them that.
The work that we've got is really exciting.
Great stuff. Thank you. So we now move on to agenda item number thirteen, which is our multi-agency safeguarding arrangements. And it's Amanda and has Ria got, oh, Ria again. Thank you.
So the purpose of the multi-agency arrangement is around ensuring a local level that partners come together and are clear about how they will work to safeguard children and promote their welfare. So under the new Working Together Twenty Three guidance, there's been substantive changes to strengthen how the local multi-agency arrangement works. So these changes include clarifying the roles and responsibilities of safeguarding partners. And that's actually includes distinguishing between the lead safeguarding partner and the role of the delegated safeguarding partner. The new guidance removes the role of the independent chair and recommends that one of the delegated partners now take on this role. So from January two thousand and twenty five, this will be the Sheffield District Commander Jamie Henderson. And it'll be done on a rotational basis between the three safeguarding partners. The safeguarding partners are into, must ensure that the arrangements are effective and have clear independent scrutiny. So the new arrangement outlines what Sheffield's independent scrutiny will look like. The Working Together Guidance also states that safeguarding partners should have an agreement in place in relation to how information is shared between the relevant agencies. And that's included in Appendix C. And the new revised multi-agency arrangement document has to be published by the thirtieth of December this year. Any questions?
Any questions or comments from members on this paper? So when, I've just got one, when we say that the new report needs publishing by thirty of December this year. By whom? Is that Sheffield Children's Safeguarding Partnership's report? And where does that go to and who agrees it?
So the arrangement is between the three partner agencies, which is South Yorkshire Police, the I C B and Sheffield City Council, the Children's Strategic Director. And the published arrangement will be on the partnership's website. So we have to make our arrangement accessible. We have to update it if anything changes within our arrangement. So each year we will renew the arrangement as we'll recognize that changes will happen. And if there's any significant changes, we have to do that. The report is sent to the national panel. And again, it has to be published each year.
Meredith, nice picture, by the way, of the report.
Thank you. That was, yeah. So I think, so my advice to you as committee. Is that this paper and the previous paper around the safeguarding annual report is one of the most important things you will see this year. This is about how you are overseeing that we are safeguarding our children and young people. So the conversation that we've had previously about knife crime, that sits within the safeguarding partnership, it is not our sole responsibility. We need to be working hand in hand with South Yorkshire Integrated Care Board, with South Yorkshire Police. This is what fundamentally ensures that our children and young people are safe, whether they are in a taxi. Whether they are going to their youth club, whether they are going anywhere in Sheffield area. And this is about how we ensure that people are trained in the right way. We have that oversight. We are seeing things before they happen. You know, we have the, we have our neighbouring authorities which have had a range of issues historically. Which safeguarding partnerships are there to ensure that that does not happen again and we have that horizon scanning. So I'd really ask you to review both of the documents. And if you have any further questions, please come back and ask us because this is probably the most important part of your job and your role.
Thank you, Meredith. So on that one then, that's your homework. Thank you. Not being flippant on it, but this is really, really important. So if everyone can take a good look at this and then if you've got any questions or comments and just make yourself familiar with it. So if there are no further questions or comments on this item, thank you very much. It is for this committee to note and endorse the new Sheffield Children's Safeguarding Partnership Multi-Agency Safeguarding Arrangements. Known as M A S A for publication in December twenty twenty four. Agree at what delegated level future changes to the M A S A can be agreed. Any changes must be published as a requirement of W T twenty three. Thank you, Working Together Twenty Three, and reported to the D F E as soon as possible. And agree at what delegated level an annual review of the M A S A can be agreed. I'll just read out the small print underneath. So local agreements are expected to change over time to ensure they continue to work effectively for children and families. To keep pace with changing demographics and evolving social and economic challenges. Any changes should be reflected in updated published arrangements and that's the Working Together Twenty Three. Thank you very much. Are we all happy to note that at this committee? Thank you. That's been noted. Thank you very much.
Yeah. Can I just thank the team for doing this? I think Sarah Lord in particular has done the piece of work which has ensured that we have delivered on time. And Sarah is also moving on to passages new. So if we could thank her and the rest of the team for making sure that we have delivered what we needed to deliver. And it's not easy in the partnership world.
Thank you. Okay, we move swiftly on to agenda item number fourteen, which is the Post Sixteen Special Educational Needs and Disabilities Top Up Funding. Which is on page three hundred and eleven of your pack. And we've got Mark Shake presenting today. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Mark Shake. I'm Head of Service Responsible for Resourcing and I've got Andy Gray helping me with this paper as well. So this is a short paper specifically talking about post sixteen top up funding. The paper is requesting members to formally approve to continue entering into direct services contract with multiple education providers, ensuring that these. Learners receive the necessary funding and support. I think just a bit of context, under national regulation, we are legally required to allocate part of school funding towards elementary top up. For young people aged sixteen to twenty five with high needs. So within the national framework, what happens is a child with, with high needs really is registered with the provider. E S F A provide element one funding, which is the basic funding directly to that provider. Element two, which is supposed to support with high needs, is again directly provided by E S F A. So we as a local authority have got limited choices apart from following the national regulation and provide level three funding to those providers. And because of those issues, we are asking the committee to approve to continue to have direct services contract rather than go to the open tender arrangement. I think this also, the education, the children and families act also requires that we provide this funding directly to the provider named in each learner's E H C P. So each child will have an E H C P, element one, element two funding will be provided by E S F A. And we as a local authority are just acting on behalf of E S F A as an extension to provide elementary funding.
Thank you, Mark. I'm just flipping through my paperwork and asking, I will bring anyone else if you've got any questions. Just on this, I understand that there are recommendations for us to agree to commission contracts required. Just looking for the financials in the report, I understand that the current annual funding allocated for our needs block element is four point six million. And in future academic years, it's expected to be a small moderate increase in this figure. Or what, is what is being proposed today going to cost more than that four point six million? Is that, is that what we're saying?
So we're saying it's four point six million pounds will continue. It's also dependent on the number of children who will have E H C P plan. So that number is likely to increase if there is an increase in the level of need or the number of children that are coming through. However, that arrangement is also negotiated through E H C P. All the funding which comes into support that comes from D S G, which is not coming from the council, resources come from, from the Department of Education. And that's why the arrangement has been put in through E H C P, through the department.
That's great. Thanks, Mark. Meredith?
So, and just, so I apologize, I'm asking you a question, Mark, but it's probably for clarity. So if I remember rightly, this is in that sense a technicality. So we're saying to the E S F A or it's now the D F E, E S F A is going into the D F E, isn't it? These are the number of children that we believe will have post sixteen top up funding over the coming years. So that they, in that sense, are commissioning the places. We are saying these are where we think the places are going to be. We've done that based on a formula. We've done that in a really secure way. But in that sense, we're bringing this here because it's really important for members to see it. But actually, the commissioning is taking place between the D F E and providers. We're kind of the conduit, I think. Is that right? Or am I well out of date with that?
You're right. I think we are actually acting as an extension to E S F A on this one. However, there will be ongoing relationships. So we, children are placed, Sheffield children are being placed with these providers. We provide that information to E S F A. Based on that number, our funding gets adjusted for the following financial year. That's how the system works on an ongoing basis. But because the children have been identified through E H C P, we have got no control apart from providing that funding to that provider.
Thank you, Mark. Okay. Any questions or comments on this one? Counselor say.
Sorry again, just for the understanding. How many providers are currently providing this? And how many number of children they get, you know, education?
There are approximately thirty providers delivering this type of provision. There are, in terms of numbers, we don't have that information to hand at this particular meeting, but we can find that. However, this funding also covers Sheffield College. So there are a large number of learners attending that provision. So it's, it's not just I S Ps where it's individual learners. It's also covering larger colleges within Sheffield and the outer Sheffield city region.
And the total funding volume at this moment is four and a half billion pounds and that's the total scope in this financial year.
The extension of the funding, a top slice, I've been top, is going to be just for next year or next three years or four years? How long?
So I think what we're saying is as long as E S F A regulations don't change and the current arrangement continues, we will have to continue with that arrangement. It's each child will have their each individual plan that triggers the funding. And I think if there is no policy changes by the national government, we will have to continue to honor that arrangement as long as we receive the funding from D F E through D S G.
Okay, well, you definitely know through the system each year the different number of pupils coming forward. Either they are going to increase or decrease each year. So have you got any information of that?
So I think the trajectory, obviously, for S E N D, the city is, we're seeing a rising numbers. So the trajectory is upward. The actual specific numbers, no, we don't because we will have to just work them out on an annual basis. And this is where I think the relationship with E S F is important because every year we will. Uh, and this is where I think the relationship with ESF is important, because every year we will do a census, we will provide that information to ESFA. They will adjust or readjust our funding based on the numbers going up or down, but the current forecast is that numbers will continue to rise.
Thank you, I think just on that, we do generally know when we're going to have post-sixteen children who are already in Sheffield, who will be progressing to post-sixteen. But we do have people that move into Sheffield as well, don't we? And like, like Andy said, there are also children who are on the boundaries that come into Sheffield or out of Sheffield. So it's, it's, it's a moving feast, I think, for definite on this one, Mark.
And I guess in September, when, when Matt brought this efficiency paper, he clearly articulated that post-sixteen is an area of growth for us at the city. So for foreseeable future, we will see these numbers rising.
And just on that, I would like to mention to people the Blue Project, which launched, uh, last week at Peak's Campus. Which is post-sixteen provision for children with special educational needs and disabilities. And if anyone gets a chance, and that's run by Sheffield College, if anybody gets a chance to go out and see it and meet some of the young people using that provision, it's absolutely fantastic. It's been a great piece of partnership working over the last couple of years, that, that element. So I'll just throw that in there, just to show you actually what is happening out there, it's really good. Um, and we need more of it, so, yeah, so are, any more questions or comments on this one, or are we happy to go to recommendations? Okay, so the, is, the recommendation is that this committee agree to commission contracts required via individuals. Education, health and care plans, as outlined in the report, and note that the high needs block element three top-up contracts. Would cover the whole lifespan of the current funding requirement. Are we all in agreement, uh, on that recommendation? Thank you, everyone, that's agreed unanimously, thank you. I think that brings us to the end of our November meeting. Um, I'd like to thank you all, um, for your support with regards to, uh, deferring, uh, the agenda item. And look forward to discussing it at the knowledge briefing, which will, we are hoping for that to be at the knowledge briefing next week. Um, so if anybody, please make it if you can, so that you feel informed on that for us to make a decision, uh, next month. And the date of the next meeting is eighteenth of December, um, please feel free to wear festive jumpers. Um, if you, if you, if you want, um, but yeah, so thank you, everyone, and I will see you all tomorrow.